All right. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight for our May 4th, 2021 Hunting Commission meeting. And I'd like to, do I need to say that remote piece? I forget.
Yes, please.
You want me to read that in here?
Yes.
Okay, it says this meeting will be held remotely via telephone and Zoom video conferencing pursuant to the Governor's Stay Home Stay Healthy Proclamation Number 20-25 as amended. All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order and it's six o'clock. So Stephanie, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ready?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So first thing on the agenda tonight is audience comments. Is there anything that isn't on the agenda tonight that somebody would like to spend three minutes talking about? Hearing none or seeing none, we'll move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes. And I, I do show that there is an error in there. I was, I don't think I was at the February meeting, unless I'm mistaken. Oh, wait, maybe I wasn't at the March meeting.
You weren't at the March meeting.
Okay, all right, then they're fine. I forgot what month this was.
Do we have, is Trish, Trish and Phil on the line? I can't tell.
I don't see them.
No, so I don't think we have enough people present to make a motion on the February 2nd meeting minutes. Carrie, Nick, is that correct?
We have Phil.
We do have Phil?
We do have Phil.
So we can, can we get by with three of the four?
We have to have four of the people who are here at the February meeting. Hi, Joe.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I wasn't here in February. I'm sorry.
We need to have the quorum of the members who are here in February to vote on the February minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll carry those again into the next meeting. And we'll also then approve the March meeting, the March meeting minutes in June as well, hopefully. All right, so let's move on to number four, the business items. And A is a public hearing downtown subarea plan and proposed regulations.
All right, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I am excited to be here tonight to present, to make a final presentation on the downtown subarea plan and the amendments to the comprehensive plan and development regulations to implement that plan. We have been working on this now for about 15 or 16 months. Going back to, we signed a contract with the Department of Commerce to accept grant money to help pay for this project in December of 2019. And then we signed a contract with GGLO and we have, I believe, one or two members of our consultant team here tonight, and they have been working on this since, I believe, January of 2020. Of course, when we started the project, we didn't know that we were about to go into a pandemic and shutdown. So we are a couple of months behind schedule, but that is because we've had to take some additional steps in trying to do outreach during COVID times. And we have done quite a few additional sets of revisions based on meeting with a couple of the stakeholders that expressed concerns. That included the tribes, the tribe and the fish, Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then we also had some meetings with Kitsap Bank, the, the architect that the city hired to design the community event center, as well as the group that is going to develop the block between Bay Street and Prospect Street next to City Hall to really iron out the plans for the west end of downtown Port Orchard. So we've made quite a few changes to the plan over time and we, we presented a mostly final version to the, of this plan to the Planning Commission last month. And so this is the final presentation of the plan tonight, barring additional changes that the Planning Commission would like to request, or perhaps that the City Council would be requesting when they take this up upon receiving a Planning Commission recommendation. I want to go ahead and share my screen and walk you through the final version of the plan. I'm going to focus mostly on planning graphics that are, that are in the planning document so that you can see how the plan has evolved. And can everybody, can somebody nod if they can see my screen? I just want to make sure that it's displaying properly. Are you looking at a map? 3.2.1?
Yes, I can see it.
Thank you. So the downtown subarea plan really looks at three different areas. There's the area that we call the West Downtown, which is from where the old Lighthouse Cheers, Tweetin's Restaurant is all the way over to the Marley Apartments and the new Rockwell Park. There's the area of East Downtown, which includes the car dealership, West Bay Center and the, the Perry Avenue area, kind of looking out above the water. And then the final area of our downtown subarea is the county campus, which is up the hill and then the neighborhood surrounding the county campus as well. When we started this project, we were considering whether we would want to seek designation through the Puget Sound Regional Council to be a regional growth center. And there are a lot of benefits of being a regional growth center in terms of the amount of grant funding that is available to you for transportation projects. And we went through that exercise and ultimately we determined that there would be too many zoning changes needed to achieve regional growth center status and decided to back away from that proposal for a less intense master plan for our downtown. When you look at the details of the plan, the zoning changes are actually relatively few. We are looking at making the east downtown area less car centric. And we have tweaked height limits by adding one story of height. As you're going up Bethel and also here at the corner of Frederick and Bay Street, there's a minor change to the downtown height overlay district to allow one more story of building height there. But beyond that, the changes really rely on the existing zoning that is in place in our downtown and really looks to identify the projects that are needed for transportation, for parks, for environmental restoration of the waterfront. And, and we're really looking to tie, to tie our downtown together with a bunch of projects that frankly are, are are permitted already today under code. And so this is really memorializing what is already allowed, but putting it into action in a way that is, that sort of communicates where we are trying to go as a city. So I wanted to share the West Downtown planning graphic and show you what has happened. And Planning Commissioners, if you have any questions as I go through this, please ask. The public will have a chance to comment once we open the, the public hearing. Starting at the, the west end of this map, there's actually a stream that flows down Port Orchard Boulevard and this stream is, it goes through a fish barrier culvert under SR16. And the tribe had pointed out that this, this feature is not identified on the city's subarea plan. And so they requested the inclusion of this stream as well as the stream that flows around City Hall and comes out of a pipe on the Port of Remerton property and then other streams on the, on the east side of downtown. The, the blocks that include the Valist Car Dealership and also up the hill, there's a handful of of large lots, the Bayside Plaza project. These are already zoned for multi-story mixed use or multifamily type buildings. And so we're just illustrating what is already allowed by code. The city recently approved the redevelopment of the, the 429 Bay Street property, which was the old lighthouse. And so we're just showing what has already been approved by the city at that location. Then when you go into downtown, there, I mentioned that the community event center site had been selected. And so we had to adjust our plans to reflect where the community event center was the preferred site and where that was selected. And also the future Kitsap Bank site, which we are currently negotiating with Kitsap Bank to buy their existing site with their intention being to relocate across Frederick where their current drive-through location is located. On the uphill side of Bay Street, we have been talking to a developer and there, they've put forward conceptual plans that would include a hill climb that would connect Prospect Street down to Orchard. Previously, this had been aligned with Port Street and would go between the 7-Eleven. But due to a lack of interest in redevelopment by the owners of that 7-Eleven building, this project was tilted a good 20 or 30 degrees to follow the Orchard Street access rather than the Port Street access. The only major block of existing buildings downtown that is identified for redevelopment is between Sydney and Frederick on the water side of Bay Street. The reason that this is seen as a redevelopment area is that these buildings were all constructed on pilings prior to our downtown being filled. And so they have saltwater that, that flows underneath these buildings at high tide and then recedes and drains out. Those, those buildings, ultimately, even though they have good character, have a limited lifespan based on how they were constructed and what it would take to bring them up to a standard once, once those pilings are nearing the end of their life. So the, the building calls or the plan calls for reconfiguring this block. And having two, basically four faces, it would be facing both the water and Bay Street with a alley that goes through the middle of the block, but potentially there would be the, the third or fourth story of that block would actually be, cover the alley so that it would be more of a sort of a tunnel through the building rather than an open air alley. And the advantage of doing this is that the, we could create a new street where the downtown parking lot is on that block and we would still have lots of on-street parking here. But the idea would be that you would have a sidewalk, on-street parking and really outdoor seating areas and places where people can gather in front of businesses to really turn, have our downtown face the water, but also face Bay Street. That new street continues in its current location behind the library where Kitsap Transit currently functions and doesn't change significantly. The other big change that you see down here is there's significantly new, more park space. The, the green bubbles that are shown here are planned for both shoreline restoration, but also enhanced green space, open space type areas. I think the majority of the restoration would be to the west of the library between the existing boat launch and the marina. But we would also certainly want to see expanded green space along the bank and between the foot ferry and the marina to make that a more park-like setting. You'll also see that the marina parking lot has been reduced in size slightly. And that's to facilitate really this short-term loading and unloading parking for users of the marina. And with some of the parking being lost on the waterfront, the proposal is to actually incorporate about 200 stalls underneath the building between Frederick Bay Prospect and Robert Geiger Street. So there's actually a net gain of parking in this plan, even though the surface parking on existing parking lots is being reduced in favor of green space. The other change here is that we've identified transportation projects to both improve Orchard Street and Port Street as more plaza-like roads with limited vehicle access. Obviously, the 7-Eleven that is here now currently has vehicle access here via Port Street. And so this is probably going to be a, a more of a, a Wu-nor concept where you are having vehicles and people sharing the same space. But the Orchard Street Plaza would, would likely be blocked off with bollards and it would only be open for service vehicles who might be bringing fuel to the marina or city vehicles going to the, the sewer lift station that's planned within the Orchard Street right-of-way. I think that's everything that I wanted to say about the West Downtown. The, there, there's a second plan in the document that's a little bit more detailed to give you an idea of kind of the street improvements and these plaza areas that are being created. And then I'm going to move to the east downtown area, which, like the West Downtown area, we added, there's a stream underneath Bethel that is currently in a pipe. They, the, the tribe was really adamant that we sort of recognized the presence of that facility, which is in the state highways right-of-way. So it's, it's a state issue more than it is a city issue. But you'll notice that Blackjack Creek, we've got an expansion of Editerner Park to the, the city actually owns part of the Ford dealership parking lot. We currently lease this to the Ford dealer for parking. And so we're envisioning that there would be some softening of the, of the armoring on Blackjack Creek to sort of restore and, and soften those banks to improve habitat. And that, that would extend upstream to where the current Kentucky Fried Chicken location is. They're actually looking at it potentially moving. They've been talking to the city about a site on Bethel recently. And so there's an interest in really restoring the, the estuary in the mouth of Blackjack Creek to make it more natural and much better for, for fish and other habitat especially. You'll see that the, the car dealership is gone. We're also talking to Bruce Titus about potentially looking at other sites in the city. And he certainly, he, he's, he's said to the mayor and I that he recognizes that the, the future of the waterfront is not selling cars. It is, it is definitely a higher and better use to do commercial or mixed-use type development. And so that's what we've shown here. We've got driveway circulation again that creates sort of a, a street along the water where you would actually have building sidewalks that, that face out on the water so that you would have a, you could have tables and chairs out there if we had restaurants or coffee shops, other types of uses. There is surface parking tucked into these sites as well, sort of between Bay Street and the water. And again, Bay Street, we're really trying to make this more of an extension of downtown with wider sidewalks and storefronts, at least from the intersection of Bethel over to Rockwell Park. Other changes on the West Bay site, there's been lots of discussion about redeveloping that area. The proposal at this time would be to extend Mitchell and have a really a controlled intersection that would extend onto the West Bay site and really provide access to that site. And again, more opportunities for storefronts or walk-up type buildings. And then you have restoration opportunities on the waterfront where, where there may, maybe some softening of the existing armoring and even possibly pulling the pedestrian pathway back from the, the water to provide more of a natural habitat. As I mentioned, as you go up Bethel, there is a proposal to increase height from, from four to five stories. It's just off the bottom of the page here where that would be proposed. But that, that is sort of the final plan for the east downtown area. Finally, when you go up to the county campus, we've really dropped the county master plan that was completed in the last year and a half into our plan to really facilitate and make sure that, that their plan can, can happen as proposed. They've proposed to significantly improve their parking situation. There's both as a parking structure that would be built down into a ravine at the corner of Division and Sydney. There's also surface parking that would be located just south of the jail that would provide employee parking and, and other visitor parking in proximity to the courthouse, maybe not right in front like you, where most people would like to park today. But it certainly addresses a need where you have spillover parking into the surrounding neighborhoods. So that, that really summarizes, I think, the, the urban form of the plan. And I want to stop there and see if the Planning Commission has any questions before I move on to the changes that are in our comprehensive plan and also the, the changes to the zoning regulations. And I did want to point out that I, I made the mayor aware of tonight's meeting because this is sort of a milestone for us. And so he has joined. And I want to give him an opportunity to say something about the plan or his, his hopes for this as well. But before we do that, do, do any planning commissioners have any questions about what is in the, the subarea plan at this time? Mayor, would you like to, to say anything more about the plan that we've put together?
Certainly. I, you know, I, many years ago, I, I was, I think I served on the Planning Commission with Lynette and Stephanie and, and others. And we've seen various plans over the years and they go on a shelf. We've been talking about redevelopment my whole life and, and all the, the potential of Port Orchard. And I really feel that we're the closest we've ever been to, to realizing that potential and seeing meaningful redevelopment in our downtown. This, the, the Public Facilities District funding was really a, gave us a jumpstart, you know, that $12 million. We're close to an agreement with the bank on the purchase of their property. So I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about the prospects of that. I, I'm in communication with the county commissioners. I think if COVID hadn't have come around, they would probably, we'd have a development agreement and they'd probably be building parking up on the county campus. But good or bad, COVID has caused us all to rethink what office and courtrooms and things of this nature. So they've kind of taken a pause and are reevaluating what the needs are because just like us here on Zoom tonight, courts are doing Zoom and maybe courtrooms don't need to be as big as we once thought. So really excited. Thank you. I would thank all of you for your service to our community and I, I, I look forward to seeing this project finished up and us getting a project going downtown.
All right. So with that, I'd like to move over to your packet now. I, I had been focusing on the plan, which as you saw in the staff report, it's too big to email. So we just sent you a link so that you could see it on the city's webpage. In terms of the staff report and the, there's a, some amendments to chapter two of our comprehensive plan that help put this subarea plan into motion. And we wanted to make sure that the chapter two and the subarea plan remain consistent with one another. So there's some red line changes there that I want to walk you through. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so that you can see the, the changes in the, in chapter two here. So chapter two is land use. And the first changes occur when we're talking about overlay districts. And I did change a reference from local centers to designated centers. Here is just a minor cleanup item. In the overlay districts chapter, I realized that we had a couple of bullets that referred to our old overlay districts from prior to amending our zoning code. And so I just cleaned up and correctly listed the overlay districts that have been created. This plan is amending the downtown height overlay district, which is what prompted me to open this section at all. But I, I went ahead and cleaned up these other pieces, which were just incorrect titles while I was at that. I also provided a new explanation of what each overlay district intends to do. The, the previous description I realized was also referring to some of the old overlay districts that had been repealed quite a few years ago. Moving on to goal number three, there is a couple of inconsistent terms referring to centers. And since we are designating this particular center as a countywide center, which is something less than a regional center, but it's more than a local center under the Puget Sound Regional Council framework. I, I'm just cleaning up the terminology to make sure that our, our, our center strategy is, is correctly referred to here. Moving further down to to section 2.7 is the, the chapter that deals with centers. And there is a little piece written about each of our centers. And of course, downtown had some existing language written about it, as did the county campus. And because we wrote a subarea plan, we, we really had to go in and revamp how we were describing the downtown and county campus centers because number one, they've been consolidated from two centers into one. And they are also the, the goals and policies associated with them are being revised as part of this planning effort. So you'll see the map boundary, this, this big magenta boundary here, that is the new center boundary for the combined county campus and downtown subarea plan. We are now just calling it the downtown subarea plan. And then you'll see a whole bunch of text deleted and a very brief blurb added. So we are now simply referring people to Appendix B where we have adopted the, the downtown center, a subarea plan. And we have deleted all of the old language that referred to the old goals and policies of the downtown plan. And we have deleted those goals and policies associated with the county campus plan because that center was consolidated with the, the downtown plan. And there's a new, there's a new vision for, for the master plan for the Kitsap County Campus. When we get into the development regulations, I'm going to scroll down a little bit further here. I, I know I'm going a little bit fast. I guess before I move on from chapter two, did anybody have any questions about the red line changes to chapter two of the land use settlement? Not hearing any. So once we get down to the development regulations, we're amending several sections. The first of which is POMC 20.32040. And it's a relatively minor change here, but because we're planning a public facility, the community event center downtown, we needed to add an additional exception for one of our requirements, which in the downtown mixed-use zone, our intent is really to bring buildings out to the sidewalk and create the traditional Main Street feel where you have shop fronts at the back of the sidewalk. You don't have parking in front of the buildings. It's a really pedestrian oriented area. So we require that you, that all buildings in the downtown mixed-use zone have, meet a build-to zone. And the build-to zone is an area along the frontage of a street. And we basically tell developers that on a primary street, 80% of your building has to be built up to the lot line within this build-to zone. But as we went through the library planning process where we hired Rice, Fergus, Miller in Bremerton to design a new library and community event center, we realized that, that that building is not intended to have storefronts, but we do want it downtown. And so we created an exception for, for projects that provide a pedestrian oriented space, provided that the, the reduction in build-to zone is no more than is required to accommodate that pedestrian oriented space. And then we also provided an exception for public civic buildings to provide a little bit more design flexibility when somebody is building something downtown that isn't a retail type use. So that one is, is a pretty minor code change. The next code change occurs in the downtown height overlay district. And we have not changed the number of stories that are allowed within the downtown height overlay district. Currently, there's a map that has a DHOD 3, a 4, and a 5-story height limit. However, working with both Rice, Fergus, Miller and GGLO on this plan, we realized that our current numerical feet limits for how tall a building can be are a little bit constraining in that typically you want ground floor uses to have high ceilings. And so if we're going to have new retail come downtown, typically you want a minimum of 13 feet on that ground floor and preferably 15 or more feet on the ground floor so that you create really open and enjoyable spaces at, at the ground level. We didn't want to take away the ability to, 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 you know, to build a mixed-use building and to have either three, four, or five stories on the building depending on where you are downtown. And we haven't amended, we, we've made some minor amendments to the map, but we really haven't changed the map in the core of downtown. It's just that you have an up, up to 10 more feet to work with. If you're trying to do something unique on the ground floor, or if you're building a building that has additional needs for mechanical equipment between floors or plumbing or other types of, of issues that would not be a, a standard 10-foot floor height per story. So, and I mentioned the, the downtown height overlay district, you can see that currently the map only includes the smaller area of downtown. It doesn't extend up Bethel beyond DeKalb. But Bethel is really in kind of a valley all the way up to the roundabout. And even over on Mile Hill, just south of the high school, there, there aren't a lot of views to be blocked. And so we really did want to add some development capacity in these areas. And so we expanded the downtown height overlay district to really extend up that, or down Bethel to the south. I guess it's up a hill, but, but south on the map. And you'll notice that the, that everything except for the portion of the property next to City Hall is now a downtown height overlay district five rather than a four-story. And, and really that relates to, I mentioned all the parking that's going to be provided in that building. And with parking stalls in a struck, in a parking structure costing about anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 per stall. And, and those numbers are probably five years old now. It's probably more today. In order to make the parking for supporting all of our downtown uses work, you really have to have the additional floor area to make a project pencil. The other minor change to our downtown height overlay district is that we realized through our shoreline master program planning that some of our downtown, especially along Bay Street, is below the minimum flood elevation for sea, for both current FEMA standards, but also accommodating for sea level rise. And so we are recommending that currently the downtown height, height overlay district measures building height from Bay Street if the property is along Bay Street. So you basically look at the, the curb line or the sidewalk on Bay Street and you measure up from there. In some cases, those sidewalks are going to have to be replaced and are going to have to go, you know, a foot or a foot and a half higher than they currently are. And the road is going to have to be brought up. So we want to make sure that So we want to make sure that people are building buildings at a future elevation based on sea level rise and current flood elevations rather than on the existing street elevation. So we're providing the ability to adjust building height based on, based on the minimum flood elevation as provided in FEMA mapping. There was one minor change on the view protection overlay district. Just because we're adopting a downtown sub area plan, you know, the purpose of that is to protect views, but it's also to help implement our downtown sub area plan. Because much of the view protection overlay district is within the planned boundaries. We did make two minor changes to the use table. What we realized is that some of the areas we've identified for parks and shoreline and habitat restoration downtown are privately owned. And so we wanted to make sure that parks can be permitted on those privately owned properties. So that if we buy them, we don't have to go through the process of rezoning them to implement the parks that are shown in our, our plan. We are also removing from the down, from the downtown mixed use zone, the ability to build new park and rides. It doesn't change the status of the existing park and ride. But we certainly are not advocating for, for new pay to park commuter type facilities just in the downtown mixed use zone in the heart of downtown. They can still be permitted on, in the gateways or kind of on the edges of downtown. But we wanted to take that out of the, the land use table. In terms of the downtown parking standards, we, we currently have different standards in the downtown mixed use zone and they provide more flexibility for ground floor uses and also have rather than providing a parking quantity based on the number of bedrooms, we just have a standard that requires parking at one, one stall per unit in the downtown. So we, we wanted to extend that. Currently it was between Orchard to Harrison. We're extending it throughout the entire downtown mixed use zone, which is still not a huge area downtown. Much of downtown has gateway mixed use or other, other zoning. And then we also that building that I mentioned at the corner of Robert Geiger and Bay Street, which is right next to city hall. Currently you're not allowed to have an entrance to a parking lot or parking garage from Bay Street. And that's between Port, Robert Tiger Street, all the way over to Harrison. You can't have any driveway cuts along that section. We realized that because of the topography of that site, we wanted to change the boundary of where you can have a driveway from Port Street, which is at 711 to allow one driveway to go into a below ground parking structure next to city hall. And that will prevent them from having to build ramps within the parking garage and will make parking significantly cheaper than if you have to have ramps going up and down between levels. They'll actually have three separate entrances to the parking structure. One from Bay Street, one from Frederick and one from Robert Geiger that will provide you access to each of the three floors of the parking deck. Finally, the the downtown residential parking standards, I, I think I, I mentioned this. We did add a provision here that says that if there is no on street parking provided next to a building, so most of downtown has on street parking, but if there isn't parking adjacent to your building, there's an extra point two, five parking stalls required per unit. So that means if you have four units without on street parking, you've got to provide a total of five parking stalls. We know you can't provide a quarter of a parking stall, but it's, it's based on the assumption that there are 10 or 20 units in, in any building that would develop downtown. The next big change, which it's being prompted by the sub area plan, but it's actually, it's actually something that would apply citywide. We currently, when, when development happens downtown, we require frontage improvements and we do it through sort of a roundabout way using a comprehensive plan policy with CIPA. Or if there's a subdivision, we can require sidewalk improvements. However, when somebody does a substantial remodel or an expansion of a building where they're just applying for a building permit, it is harder to impose requirements to either fix broken sidewalks in front of a building or to provide sidewalks where they're not currently provided. And so this code, section 20.202 that we are proposing is totally new. It is, it is modeled after a Tacoma ordinance that seems to be pretty effective and it it, it requires frontage improvements or, or improvements to alleys where, where alleys are provided serving lots at the time of building permit, so that if you have some of these old lots in the city develop, the city has a way to ensure that the sidewalks or the offsite improvements get constructed with the building. And so there's a table here that talks about for different types of projects, how much can the city actually require of the developer? So if you're doing additions or remodels, we really cap how much we're going to ask somebody to do. But if it's new construction, there's no limit on, on the sidewalks we can require on the front of a property. The nice thing about this too is, is I mentioned if there are broken sidewalks or substandard sidewalks from an ADA accessibility standpoint in front of a building, this code would allow us to require that those sidewalks be improved as a condition of the building permit. It also creates a framework in section five here for a fee in lieu of construction. And so if, if for instance, you are on a dead end street and, and maybe a good example, I'm going to go back to the map here. Up at the courthouse on division, there are houses down division going down to Port Orchard Boulevard. It's a pretty steep hill. It's a dead end. It may not make sense to, to require somebody who would build a new house on a vacant lot here to put in sidewalks. And so the proposal is that if sidewalks really don't make sense and the city public works director agrees that they don't make sense, we would allow you to pay a fee in lieu of construction so that we would put it into the sidewalk fund rather than making you build something that's not ultimately going to be used, which provides the city flexibility to put sidewalks where they really are needed or where we need to repair things or do ADA accessibility improvements. So this is, this is probably the most comprehensive of the zoning changes in the, the to implement the downtown plan, but which would also apply citywide that we have proposed. And that is really, oh, there's, there's one more set of changes here. The community design framework maps, you'll remember these from the effort that the city took to create design standards citywide and each area of the city that is on an arterial has these colored, the, the roads are colored either red, purple, blue or green corresponding to store, storefront streets, landscape streets, varied or marine. And we are making an amendment to the, the map that includes the areas of, of the sub area. The changes are relatively minor. You'll see that the, for instance, the community center site, previously that was split at the middle of the block between a storefront block frontage and a marine. So we're cleaning up that issue. We also are making the intersection of Orchard and also the, the proposed hill climb to connect prospect down to Bay Street. Those are all now significant street corners. And when you're, when you develop a site that has a significant street corner, you're required to do something special with the building to either create outdoor pedestrian space or sort of a grand entry. I mean, it's a, it doesn't have to be a clock tower, but it's sort of that, that really nice corner feature that accentuates a building and makes it a destination. So all of the areas where you see these yellow triangles are significant street corners and we have reallocated those in our downtown consistent with the downtown plan. We also, there's some minor changes. I think Mitchell was added here and then also the new streets that are proposed. Both in the central downtown on the waterfront, but also where the Ford dealer is. We've designated those as varied streets and a varied street basically means you can be, you can either have landscaping between the building and the street, or you can bring storefronts right out to a sidewalk. So that, that provide, the purple is the most flexible, the green requires a landscape setback and the, the red requires storefront development. The other change up at the county courthouse, I believe that Klein was not previously designated, so that has been added. And that's sort of to help implement the, the county courthouse development. It says it can be a landscape setback or a storefront. And then Sydney was actually extended it previously terminated at Kendall, but it goes all the way to the end of the given center. So that in the event that that is redeveloped, it, it meets one of the two, either storefront or landscape type setback. If we were to see a new building there. And finally, the, the Mile Hill area, Mitchell has just been added as a landscape street where previously it wasn't included in the framework. So all the other maps here remain unchanged, but we had to leave them in the ordinance because we're, we wanted to show all the changes to that particular chapter. And that is, that concludes my presentation of the downtown sub area plan and the regulations and before I, I turn it over for questions and have you opened the public hearing? I know our consultant is here. Mitch, did, did you have anything you want to add? I kind of I think I covered most things, but if there's anything that you saw that I missed, please feel free to speak up.
No, I, I would just, thanks for that, Nick. Just on the height, just elaborate a little bit on that too. As we looked at buildings downtown, the other item that driving that slight increase in additional height for a floor to floor height is to really allow for both the ground floor heights for storefronts as Nick had mentioned, but also to allow for a potential of upper level office space above storefronts downtown, which require larger height. And then in addition to that, the most recent international building code requirements have become a lot more stringent in terms of HVAC requirements, which are also pushing for to for height. So it's really a combination of all three of those. That's the only addition. So, thanks, Nick.
Thank you. And I did want to mention, since I see Mr. And Mrs. Napgi here, the, the zoning change for your property that, that you had commented on is included in the zoning map that, that goes with the downtown plan. And I'm just now realizing that I don't know that the zoning map appeared in the packet. And so I was going to pull that up and just display it on the screen real quick if I can, if I can locate.
Thank you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there'll be public testimony when we open the public hearing. So please hold your comments until then. So planning commissioners, if you have any questions before we open the public hearing, I'm happy to take those, but maybe you want to hear from the public before you start asking questions.
I just have one quick question. When you were talking about from the sidewalk level that it would be from the new sidewalk level, how much taller is that about?
It, it's going to vary depending on where you are downtown. But if you remember when Carrie brought forward the shoreline master program revisions, we had the sea levels rise analysis and it showed where the most flooding occurs in downtown. I think the worst location is probably between Sydney Avenue and Orchard Street downtown, but specifically right in front of where the Kitsap Bank building is going to go. Also around, I think near city hall, near the boat launches gets, when we have king tides and rain and wind at the same time, you'll see water on the street there. So those areas probably need a foot to a foot and a half of elevation added. But it's going to vary depending on where you are in that corridor and what the existing elevation is.
Okay, thanks Nick. Does any of the other planning commissioners have a question right now?
I do not.
Okay, so at this time I will open the public hearing for the downtown sub area plan and propose regulations. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
And there's a raise your hand button on the Zoom app. So if you want to raise your hand, then Annette knows who to call on. I see at least one person physically raising their hand. So we, she knows to call on you, but.
So who was raising their hand? Laurie. Okay, go ahead Laurie. Thank you. Do you want to state your name and address, please?
Hi, this is Laurie and Earl Carson and we live in Bremerton, 6225 Northwest Gross Road, but we have property on Klein. And this is the kind of the first time we've really got a lot of information on this. We didn't know what was happening. So we don't know where we are in this whole project.
The property address is 820 Klein.
It's the corner of Klein and Taylor.
So, so this is, as a public hearing, this is an opportunity for you to make comments. I'm happy to add, to try to answer questions as well. But and I can, I can answer the question for your property that on Klein and Mitch confirm, please confirm this if I'm misspeaking. I do not believe that the zoning on Klein, at least between Dwight and Kendall is changing. Is that, are you in that general block?
We're on Klein and
We believe Taylor.
I think it's Taylor and Klein. It's 820 Klein, the duplex.
Gotcha. So, so that zoning is currently neighborhood mixed use and it is proposed to remain neighborhood mixed use, which allows for both houses duplexes, but also commercial type, you know, law offices and other things associated with the courthouse. There's no change there. Obviously across the street where the courthouse improvements are going to be located, we're, we're sort of paving the way for the courthouse, but your property is not directly affected.
Okay, thank you. That's what we wanted to know.
I actually think that's Klein and Smith, but that's the same, isn't it, Nick?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think testimony, it's a, are, are you asking Laurie or were you asking for any other members?
I was asking Laurie.
Okay. And that Diane has her hand raised.
Okay. And I can't see that. Oh, I see it now. Okay. Go ahead Diane, you're on mute though. And please state your name and address.
Okay, yeah. My name is Diane Watrous and I live at 529 Sweeney Street. So I'm basically across the street from the county courthouse. And some of, I got the notice because they said that my zoning might change because of this sub area plan. And that's what I'm concerned about. And I didn't hear, I didn't hear that addressed in the previous presentation. I don't think Nick talked about that.
Bear with me for one second. I'm looking up your property here.
Oh, okay.
Nick, all, all of these properties that are being referred to are on the west side of Klein Street. And I don't think there's any changes to the west side of the east side is, is where the, and the properties within the county campus is where the changes are.
That's correct. I, I think the reason that you got noticed is that the, some of the properties that are associated with the future Kitsap County parking facility and courthouse are having zoning changes. And because you were within 300 feet or whatever the, the required proximity is, you received a notice. So the notice said the same thing, whether your zoning was changing or whether it was a property near you that was changing. Is that?
When I was, when I went online and looked at the different proposals, the four proposals, one of them showed my block being rezoned. And so that's why I was confused about it, but I guess if that's the way it is right now, that's fine. Okay.
Nick, this is Carrie. So the notices were sent out to everybody and this is based on page 75 in section three of the sub area plan. These are the people on the west side of Klein and these were the proposed changes from residential two to neighborhood mixed use. So there, there are a lot of properties on the west side of Klein that were rezoned or proposed to be rezoned. So yes, everybody on the, on that side of Klein would have received a notice.
Well, thank you, Carrie. My apologies. I misspoke there Laurie and Diane. It looks like the properties. So Carrie, is it just the properties that are along Klein that are changing or is it all, it doesn't go further down those side streets, right?
I'm sorry, did I speak over Mitch?
Go ahead, Carrie.
There are a number of properties between Dwight and Kendall along Klein, on the west side of Klein that are changing from R2 to neighborhood mixed use. So all of those property owners, and if there's any business owners in there as well, they received a notice. There are also some along the west side of Sydney between Kitsap and Dwight, they would have received a notice. It's the same thing going from R2 to neighborhood mixed use.
I'm going to go ahead and share the zoning map here on the screen.
Yeah, that would be helpful because then you can see, actually, can you share the, the page from? If you can share the page from the sub area plan, Nick, that would show specifically what is proposed to be rezoned.
Okay, is that, is the sub area plan up there now?
Yes, and it's page 75.
Okay, there we go. All right. Yeah. So here's, here's the before and after. Oh, you're right. It's it's yellow crosshatch next to yellow. So yes, the hang on, I'm just looking at something here. Carrie, the zoning map that we prepared shows that, oh, the neighborhood mixed use is just a different color on this map. That's the, the issue. So, so the neighborhood mixed use zone still allows residential houses, but it does allow for additional opportunities for infill development. I'm going to pull up the code associated with, um, residential mixed use, and everybody can see what it says here. So in the, whoops. So in the residential mixed use zone, um, you are allowed to do, um, townhouses, live work units. So you can have a, a business on the ground floor and a unit on the upstairs of your house. You can do a shop front house, which is sort of, um, you see this a lot in older neighborhoods in Tacoma, Seattle, uh, Portland, other port towns and other places, where it's kind of a, an older house that does have a business in the ground floor, but it still has the historic character upstairs. And then, um, accessory building types, uh, or accessory buildings are also allowed. So the intent here, and I'm not sure Mitch, if this is what we had intended, but the, um, but single family detached houses would become a non-conforming use because it's really meant to allow for additional infill development in that location. So Mitch, is that correct?
If I may, um, I distinctly remember us talking with the council and council member Luca Reli bringing this up, uh, in particular from Kitsap Street up to Division on Sydney, that we weren't making any changes.
I, I seem to remember that conversation as well. This is just something that must have gotten missed in our, uh, final edits here. So I, I guess for the, the members of the public that are commenting, it would be helpful to understand whether you have a comment, whether you prefer to keep your existing zoning or whether you would like to go to residential mixed use in those locations. And that way the planning commission can take that into consideration in making their recommendation and either keep the existing zoning or, um, make a change to commercial mixed use.
Well, could I, um, could I have, could I ask a couple of questions that might, um, help me make my decision on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, how is it going to affect me with my taxes if you change the zoning?
My understanding of how property taxes are assessed is that it's based on the current use of your property, not, uh, well, the majority of your tax is based on the current use of your property. Only a small fraction is land value. So your land value may have a slight increase in how much it's worth, but as a fraction of your overall taxes, it doesn't move the needle significantly.
Okay. So is this a, well, how should I put it? Is this kind of a step towards like imminent domain and being able to force me to sell my property?
Definitely not. You, our code allows for, allows non-conforming uses to continue in perpetuity as long as you maintain them. If the house became dilapidated and, and ceased to be occupied, you can lose your non-conforming use status by virtue of, um, the house being abandoned. But as long as you continue to maintain it, it would stay, uh, as, uh, a legal non-conforming use.
Okay, what about my heirs?
Yeah, it, it's transferable.
Okay, okay. Well, I have, I felt like I didn't want the zoning to change, but those were my two main concerns. So I don't suppose I have a, a comment one way or the other. Thank you.
Mitch, were you trying to get a word in there?
Yeah, I just wanted to step back and correct you, but I think you had said commercial mixed use. It's neighborhood mixed use. Um, so that allows for residential, um, to continue, um.
Oh, you're right. I.
They're quite, they're, they're quite a significant change in, in those.
Yes, yes, you're right. I, that's what was, that was what was shocking about reading the, the building types in the, uh, the first zone that I read. I read the, um, you're right, I read the commercial mixed use zone. I had not scrolled down to neighborhood mixed use. Okay, so I apologize to everyone. I'm going to get this right, uh, eventually here.
And that's consistent with much of the zoning that currently occurs, um, along Sydney Street.
Right. So the ne, the neighborhood mixed use zone, twenty-point-three-five-zero-two-zero. Um, this allows for detached houses. So all the houses that are there would be legally non-conforming forever. Um, are, are legally conforming, um, at this time. Duplexes are allowed, backyard cottages. If you want to build a mother-in-law apartment are allowed. Um, you can do a cottage housing cluster where you have a couple of, of smaller houses arranged around a, a central landscaped area. You can do fourplexes, townhomes, shop front houses, uh, which are the, you take sort of an older house that has some character and you can convert the ground floor into, uh, some sort of business. Uh, and then of course accessory buildings. So my apologies, I clicked on the wrong link when I was trying to share the code. But, um, yeah, neighborhood mixed use preserves everybody's right to do what they're currently doing there. Um, but also provides expanded opportunities for redevelopment in the future.
Thank you for clarification. You almost gave my wife heart attack on that.
My apologies.
No, 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 no worries. I, I, I want to say, Mr. Bond, I think that, uh, you guys done an amazing job with this planning and, uh, integrating, uh, uh, downtown area with the neighborhoods and all that. Uh, I really like what I'm seeing for, for the community, and it's, uh, it's definitely approach, move in the right direction. We appreciate all the effort behind the scene.
Sure. Can I just ask one clarifying question? And this would be to Rob. Did you say that they're not going to do it between Kitsap and Division? So anything past Division like to Kendall will be the mixed use?
I had more than one council member at our, when a council reviewed the early drafts had that concern, and I don't know that it got captured from, from Kitsap to Division on Sydney.
Okay, but everything, are we on Sydney or on Klein?
On Sydney.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, I see another hand raised, but it's on a phone call. So it's, uh, the six-four-nine-two-zero-eight-five. Can you please state your name and address? Did the person on the telephone call of six-four-nine-two-eight-five or two-zero-eight-five want to speak?
Hello, this is John Lackey. Can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Yeah, John Lackey at seven-zero-nine Smith Street. And I'm in the path of the future proposal for parking for the, uh, Kitsap County courthouse expansion. I sent, uh, Mr. Bond a letter, and he replied to a couple of the points I made, uh, a couple he didn't reply to, I'd like to bring up tonight. Uh, one of them is the packet that you have in front of you. You just dropped in what the county is proposing. It doesn't reflect the actual ownership of land. The three largest parcels, the county has not been able to acquire those. One of them is seventy, the department building. Um, my resident, seven-on-nine Smith, and attorneys off the corner. So my hope is that you would take a look at your plan tonight and include a comment saying that the county does not own the property. They're not able to develop the plan as illustrated at this time. That's one of my points. And the other is, this is an eminent domain situation because one of the policies in your proposal, LUH-ten, is to support the acquisitions by the county of the needed parcels to implement the county campus expansion. So I don't think it's role the city of Port Orchard to affect policy in order for an eventual taking of property. That's all I have to say, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your testimony tonight. Um, next up is Steve.
See me okay?
Yeah.
I'm Steve Seago, and I'm currently residing and sitting outside of the city limits, um, in South Kitsap. But I own some property in downtown Port Orchard, including, uh, on Bay Street as part of the subject discussion earlier about the, uh, the downtown master plan on Frederick and, um, Geiger above Bay Street between Prospect. Also, some, some property out at, um, Bethel next to the KFC that was, uh, referenced earlier. Uh, and I also want to address some, some issues related to some work I'm doing on some restoration that's part of this as well. So I, I think I have three minutes, so I'll try to do a minute each. First, I want to thank you all for, for your effort. I've, I've been watching and participating to the best of my ability over the last year and a half, two years as this, um, this has evolved, this, uh, master plan for down, sub area plan for downtown Port Orchard. And I will tell you that, uh, the reference, I won't go into great detail, but I'm part of a, a, a team that has put together, um, an effort to redevelop that area between Geiger and, and Frederick, uh, on the uphill side of Bay Street. And, um, and Nick, your comment earlier about the, the five-year-old numbers on parking, um, you're right, they're outdated. It's about sixty thousand dollars a stall and up from, from going forward. But we do plan on providing three stories of, of structured parking, covered parking as part of that, um, master plan project, as well as mixed use, um, street frontage mixed use and retail, commercial, as well as residential, um, above the parking. So we're in process of doing that now and are making lots of progress to, uh, to, right now, we're in the design phase. We put things on hold until we knew where the, the city was going with the, the community events center location. One of the options was the property that we're referring to now. Um, and we have pivoted the view corridor from that northwest to northern angle, consistent with the comments I heard earlier. So we're, we're in process. We expect to, um, sometime later this year, submit, um, permit applications and, and have a pre-application discussion with the city about more specific design components of that project. So we're very thankful for all that work, including the pedestrian components of, um, the waterfront area and the shoreline restoration that we're also addressing with some other work we're doing. Um, secondly, on the, on the other end of town, on the, uh, the Bethel property, we're in the process now as well as, as another pretty much me and my, my partner there that are working on, um, that Bethel property you see just across from KFC. There on the, you've seen our, maybe our offices, Waterman Mitigation Partners on the corner there at the Old West Sound Building. And we're, we're working to develop a, um, a, a mixed use facility consistent with the proposed, uh, sub area plan and, and current zoning. Daylight that stream that you referenced earlier as well, and to, um, provide for some very high, high quality, uh, you know, class A tenant space for the commercial area as well as, um, vertically some market rate. So all this is really helpful to be able to, to rely on this plan to provide an overlay that, uh, makes things. Uh, i- i- it helps us as, as folks who are investing a lot of private capital and taking a great risk to know that there's some, some form to the overall plan, and also the ability to have a, an overall plan that provides some of the pre, um, permanent processes. Very, very, very helpful for, for our, our purposes as well. And the, and the last piece I'll, I'll tell you that I'm working on is the, the restoration component. That's a separate entity I work on, which is, uh, mitigation and habitat and wetland restoration. We're working on that West Bay area you see, uh, there, uh, as well as I met with Mr. Titus last week, and we're trying to organize exactly what you see here, which is the idea of restoring and opening up the habitat for Blackjack Creek. We own some properties above as well. And so all these pieces are coming together, but they do depend upon the, the city's, um, work and the investment and effort that's been made by staff and the consultancy have hired to, to do this work. And we're very appreciative of all that and we support, uh, um, you know, without getting into any details that I've missed. But, but overall, the, the, the effort here, and we would hope that the planning commission would support it as well. And that's my three minutes, I think, probably.
Thank you for your testimony and good luck on all your projects.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to, um, make it, make testimony on this project? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing for the downtown suburban, suburban plan and propose regulations. Thanks. Commission have any, um, thoughts?
I just want to say a really good job, Nick and Mitch, um, the whole team. You guys did a really nice job and, uh, and, uh, putting the proposal out there tonight, Nick, really, really well done.
Thank you. Sorry about the confusion on the zoning, uh, designations. I, I hadn't studied that for a few weeks now. I, I was hoping to mention, I, I looked at land use goal ten or land use policy ten that was mentioned by one of our commenters. And, um, I, I think, and I'm going to ask Mitch and Carrie to, to weigh in if they have an opinion on this. But the policy says, support the acquisitions by the county of the needed parcels to implement the county campus expansion plan. I don't know that that policy really does anything one way or another to support or not support the county. So if, if you want to have a discussion on whether that should be included, I, I, I certainly don't see a reason that that has to be in the, the, um, the document if we wanted to, to make that change. Stephanie did, or, um, sorry, uh, Carrie or, uh, Mitch, did you have any thoughts on, on that particular comment?
To me, that policy is, it's not so much that the policy implies what we're going to do necessarily in the future specifically to take specific actions, but it supports what we're doing with the rezones, um, in particular that you, we were just discussing that you just had up on the screen. That's part of supporting, um, the county's acquisitions for that project. So I think those two are tied together. And that to me is what that policy is about primarily.
Right. And I think I looked up the address that was given, um, and I believe that that particular property is not one of the ones that is being changed.
Mr. Bond, if I could, I, I can give some background on, you know, prior to my time in our, in, in our city government, the Kitsap County attempted to move the county, uh, campus and our government center to Bremerton. And the city of Port Orchard, uh, sued the county and prevailed. But part of that outcome was that we agreed that we would work with the county so, and not allow them to expand their campus because they need to be able to grow. Um, our county's growing and, um, our government, city government is growing and the county government is growing. And, uh, for us, for them to be able to fill their mission, they need to have adequate parking and a new courthouse and, and other buildings up there. So that's kind of the background is there, there was litigation at one point, then when the county attempted to move the, um, the county seat to Bremerton.
So anyway, I just wanted to throw it out there if, if the planning commissioners had any feeling one way or another. And you, if anybody has a strong feeling about that, you can stay in or, or, um, could potentially go.
You know, um, I will, um, admit that I've never thought of that. And, uh, the idea of losing the county seat is terrifying to me, uh, as a resident of Port Orchard and as a planning commissioner. Uh, and I will also add that I see this, I, I'll echo, um, the other comments made by the other commissioner today. That you've done a really great job with this, um, in our, in our apartment, Nick and Carrie and Mitch and everybody who's been involved. And I really see this as vital. I mean, leave the county out of it. Redeveloping downtown is really vital for the economy of Port Orchard and our future, our ability to have people working downtown and thriving downtown. Um, so those are my thoughts. Thank you.
And I'm still just a little bit confused, Nick. With. with the mayor's comments on Klein. Are we at odds with, with council right now as far as that goes or has that been resolved?
Not regarding Klein. It was Sydney from Kitsap Street to Division.
Okay.
Is where the
Right.
The council was, had concerns about.
Right. So this block where my, if you can see my cursor here, currently this area is zoned R2 and it's proposed to be neighborhood mixed use. So that was where council had concern was on the steep part of Sydney.
Okay.
And, and what those changes would potentially mean.
Yeah, I got a little confused there with the, the comments from the residents on, on Klein there and the, and the owners on Klein there.
In terms of making changes though, I, I think because we don't have it, other than having had some concerns expressed in a work-study meeting, I would leave it for the council to ask those changes be made as part of the adoption process rather than trying to, to anticipate exactly how they want that to look. So we will, if this is recommended by the planning commission today, we will be taking this to the city council work-study meeting for a final review on the 18th of this month, and then they would potentially be able to take action to adopt on the 25th of May. So at that work-study meeting, if they want to change, that would be the time for them to tell us what that change is. And then Mitch can make a revision to the zoning map if necessary.
Okay. Any other questions?
I forget, did you already close the public hearing?
I did. Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure.
I did. So I guess, do you want us to vote on it tonight?
Yes, if the planning commission is ready to make a recommendation to approve, I would, we, we are absolutely seeking that so that we can get this project wrapped up. We have a hard deadline with the Department of Commerce for our grant money that if we don't deliver this by June 30th, we wouldn't get the last of our reimbursement. So it is critical that we get this across the finish line soon.
Okay.
And there's a suggested motion, I believe, in the staff report that was provided to you.
I'll go ahead and make the suggested motion. I move to recommend that the city council approve the final draft downtown Sub Area Plan dated April 2021 and the accompanying comprehensive plan amendments to the land use element revisions to POMC Title 20 as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you. So moving on to business item C, it's another public hearing for the revisions. POMC 20-132, the temporary sign code.
And Carrie is going to take this one so that I can finally take a bite of my dinner.
Okay, thank you. I will just give the planning commission a brief overview of this item. This is a minor amendment to our sign code 2132 that was requested primarily by our code enforcement officer in response to some issues that we've been having with temporary signs for residential developments that have been going in in the city. Some of the issues that he's been experiencing are, we've been getting some very large signs for subdivisions and other real estate developments going in. And not just really large, but they've also been made of pretty permanent materials and have been mounted on very permanent like concrete pillars and in concrete foundations so that they've really been more of a permanent type sign rather than the temporary advertising, you know, coming soon. Here is this development we're building kind of sign that's supposed to provide a temporary notice of a subdivision or new development under construction. There's also been problems that, you know, when something has been under development and then there's been an extended pause or there's been a transfer in the developer who's been, you know, we've had some changes in develop, development ownership or there's been a pause in phasing and subdivision simply hasn't undergone any work for a while. You know, these, the signs have stayed up for a really long time and that's not the intent of the temporary sign code. And so our, our officer just asked us to put a, a little bit more into our temporary sign code with relationship to real estate and subdivisions that would allow us a little more regulation on the size, the materials, the allowable locations and the display timing of these types of signs. And so I'm just to kind of go through with you what the kind of things that he was asking for, they're very minor. And if, if you look at what was in your packet, I can just tell you very quickly where these are. And in 20132 to 70 temporary signs, there is a new section that is right after section two under multifamily zones, that's under six residential zones, then going down to section two. And then there's a new section three, that's III called developments. And that now says that you can have one post-mounted sign of up to eight feet in height and 32 square feet, which will be allowed in associated with a residential subdivision during the period of active site development and construction. And this sign cannot be set in concrete or otherwise permanently installed and it shall be removed upon completion of construction of all homes in the associated subdivision. If the site development or construction ceases or is suspended for a period of more than 180 days, the sign shall be removed until the construction or the development resumes. And so this is just to prevent having really big signs up. People were putting up signs that were up to 64 feet, I believe. We were seeing 64 square feet. And as I said, we were seeing things being put up that were very permanent in nature. And I think they were maybe trying to get around having to get a permanent, permanent sign permit by saying these were temporary, but they were actually staying up for years. So this is to try to deal with that issue and allow a little more enforceability. And we also going down to the next page under number seven, non-residential zones, under freestanding signs, that's section B, freestanding signs, including post-mounted stake and portable signs. We just added a disclaimer saying one sign per street frontage that meets the following conditions. And then nothing has changed below that. And that was to get around the issue of developers who are putting up multiple signs per street frontage all over the place. And so that was the way that people were getting around the limit on you can, we, we, we said you can have one sign of up to X square feet. But we didn't say per street frontage. And so unfortunately, we were getting many signs all over a single street frontage. And that was presenting a very, an appearance that we didn't want, especially for temporary signage. So that, that hopefully will clean up that problem a little bit as well. Let's see. And then last, under the definition section, and that is 2132 to 90, we amended the definition of temporary sign a little bit to make it clear that post-mounted temporary signs may be made of durable materials if they are on properties that are actively listed or marketed for sale or rental or actively under development or construction. So durable materials, meaning something that's not paper or thin plastic, not something that's just supposed to be up for a weekend or a week. But, you know, as we say here, temporary signs of durable materials do need to be removed when these properties are no longer actively listed or marketed for sale or rental or, you know, when the property is no longer actively under development or construction. So these are not meant to be permanent signs. They don't become part of the subdivision once the lots in it, the houses in it are no longer for sale. And if for some reason, you know, the developer goes bankrupt or if, you know, one phase is done and there's a very long pause before another phase stop starts. If the site development or the construction ceases or is suspended for a period of more than 180 days, these signs shall be removed until the construction development resumes. So this definition of temporary sign now mirrors the language that we added up in the earlier portion of the code under temporary signs, just to make sure that again, we have that coordinating language in both sections for enforceability. And so again, this is what was requested by our code enforcement officer, just to make it a little bit easier for his job to enforce signage, signage issues for residential developments. And we're just asking that the planning commission consider this and approve an ordinance amending these minor changes to the sign code in chapter 2132 after holding a public hearing and considering any testimony from the public. Thank you. Did anyone have any questions?
Carrie, I do. When I reviewed or looked through this, it keeps talking about temporary signs, but there's no timeframes on anything. And I realized it was seeming to be more towards, you know, using inexpensive and signs that were supposed to be up during construction such or sales. But there's nothing that says that the sign can't be up for any longer than six months or has to be renewed at every year. Or there's no timeframe. At least I didn't see any. Did I miss it?
Um, that's what we're adding to it is that you, you will not be able to keep it up for more than 180 days unless you, you continue to keep working on the project on the development.
So, so the limit is really tied to the active period of development. And I did want to, I found an example of one of these signs, just so you can see what the issue is. But this is one at McCormick Woods where they're advertising their various builders and where, where to go to view new houses. And the problem here is this sign is built out of permanent materials rather than the really temporary signs, which are meant to, to fall apart. So I don't see anything fundamentally wrong with these signs being up while development is occurring and houses are being marketed. But technically in our code right now, I, I don't think that these can be permitted without getting a, a permanent sign permit and, and you know, build, building it with the footing and concrete and everything else that's required under the building code.
Correct. And so what the changes that are being proposed would allow the type of sign that Nick just showed to go in and, and to be called a temporary sign as long as there is active development going on, on that site. But then when development or construction is, is completed, they either need to apply for a permanent sign permit if they want that to be a permanent sign because they could, can, you know, conceivably ask that that just be considered permanent, but it needs a permit or they will need to take that sign down. So it, it's one or the other. And that just wasn't a process that we had before.
So was the crux of the problem that they're putting up signs that are essentially permanent and calling them temporary? Or that they have the signs up that are getting old or inappropriate because the construction has stopped or the sale is over and they're still there?
Both.
So would having a something about keeping these signs in good condition? Help?
We already have requirements for keeping signs in good condition, especially for non-durable materials that if they become tattered or faded or worn, they are supposed to be replaced. And it's not so much that these have become tattered or worn. It's that temporary is supposed to mean temporary. But you know, what does temporary mean if, you know, there's a housing development, but you know, phase two is coming, but it's not coming for a year, two years, three years, and that sign is up there and it's considered to be a temporary sign. But you've put it in place, you know, of, of permanent materials and a permanent foundation. So, you know, I think, I think that we're just trying to maybe provide more specificity too for the developers to know what they can and can't do as a temporary sign or what they, what they need a, a permit for as a permanent sign. So that, you know, there's no confusion on their part or on the, on the sign maker's part as well.
Can I ask a question about signs when it's public notice signs and how long can those stay up? Because there's quite a few of them out there that are pretty tattered and bad looking. So I don't know if there is like a limit on how long they can stay out there? What kind of a public notice sign?
There are signs, I think, the big yellow ones.
Yeah, there's yellow ones and there's some old white ones out there.
Yeah, the white ones, we don't use those anymore. But as, as long as a project is still in a permitting process, those signs would be allowed to stay up once the permit has been issued or if the application expires, then it's no longer a required sign of the city. So it should come down. I, I saw one of those on Sedgwick just the other day between Geiger and Ramsey and was thinking that we probably needed to, to ask them to take the sign down. So that's mostly just a code enforcement issue to, to tell property owners to remove them when they're no longer needed.
Okay. So it's their responsibility, not, not the city's?
Correct.
Okay. Are, are you asking about a public notice sign like for a public hearing or something?
Okay. Yeah. Like the one, there was one on Klein, like on an alley and it sat there. I don't even, it might, it might still be there, but it was there for a really long time. And I, I just didn't know what the process was for that, how long they stayed or what, what it was.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So seeing no more questions, I will open the public hearing for revisions to POMC 20-132 temporary sign code. Anybody have any testimony? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the revisions to the temporary sign code. Any other questions or? All right. Do you want us to make a recommendation on this?
I'd be happy to do so. And I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council approved, excuse me, approve an ordinance amending the sign code in chapter 20.132 for the POMC as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Oh.
I.
I.
All those opposed? All right. Nice job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, for explaining it.
Thank you.
So our final business item tonight is the overview of the 2021 annual comprehensive plan amendment docket.
All right. So this is just a, a brief presentation tonight to let you know the 2021 comprehensive plan amendments that have been put forward for this year. We're a little behind schedule on this and part of the reason is that we're trying to finalize the downtown sub area plan because some of these changes are being made as part of the sub area plan. And then we are going to amend the comprehensive plan again to take care of other issues. So we have a, it's hard to give you a red line copy of something when changes are pending. So for now, we just had at the last council meeting, the city council approved the, the 2021 docket. And so beginning in June, we will start reviewing these. The, the city initiate, the city has initiated several text amendments. The six-year transportation improvement program, we update that every year as well as the 20-year transportation improvement program. And we just slide the spreadsheet out one year and either add projects, move projects around or reprioritize depending on what grant funding or other changes are, are sought by the public works department and the city council. The, the next city initiated text amendment is that the appendix B in our comprehensive plan lists all of the documents that we adopt by reference. So we have new water and sewer system plans that, the sewer system plan was updated last year. The water system plan is currently being updated and is expected to be approved by the Department of Health in the near future. However, trying to do anything with water systems and the Department of Health right now is difficult because when COVID hit, the state reassigned all of the water, the water system planners to deal with COVID type issues. And so they have been pretty non-responsive for the last year. But we are hoping that the water system plan can be added to the comp plan appendix B by the end of our process this summer. The next amendment, we're updating the, the city's capital facilities plan, which is currently adopted in appendix B. One of the changes is we're adding, I believe, the One of the changes is we're adding, I believe, the, the new community event center has to be added to the capital facility plan. We have also been working with the, with a consultant to update the city park plan. And that document is going to come to you here in the near future. It's going to the land use committee next week and we're almost done preparing the draft parks plan. So you'll, you, you can look forward to seeing that soon and make sure you set aside a fair amount of time. It's a, a pretty lumpy document. In the utilities element, we are proposing to amend the capital improvement project tables. So in sewer, there's a couple of minor changes and then there are a lot more changes in the water table because of the new water system plan. And so we're just updating those lists, which really duplicate what is in the, the plans that are adopted by reference. But we want to make sure that everything is consistent throughout our comprehensive plan. Corresponding to the capital facilities plan amendment is an amendment to the capital facilities element. There's also a table in section 9.2 and, and new policies associated with a couple of projects that are being brought forward. The next bullet refers to the 1987 Blackjack Creek Comprehensive Management Plan. Being that it's from 1987, it is pretty old and we, we in 2017 completed a new Blackjack Creek watershed assessment and protection and restoration plan. So we're replacing an old document with a newer document that again is being adopted by reference. And then, as I mentioned, chapter two, tonight, we presented you with, and you recommended several amendments to the land use element. We have further amendments to the land use element, but that were unrelated to the downtown plan. And so we're bringing those forward separately. Then there are map amendments that are proposed. The city sponsored the NAFG amendment, however, because the planning commission has recommended approval of the sub area plan, I believe that this will be, the sub area plan should be adopted by the end of this month. And the, we will not need to reconsider the NAFG amendment because it will have already been adopted. But this is just a placeholder in case, for some reason, the city council does not adopt the downtown sub area plan. And then finally, we had an application for a map amendment from Mr. He. And this is out by the China Sun buffet on Bethel. This property is a pretty large piece of, of well, he's got two pieces of land behind the China buffet and then there's one off of Salmon Berry. And he's seeking to change the zoning on the piece on Salmon Berry to match the piece that is tied to the China Sun buffet so that he can have an entrance off of Salmon Berry as well as developing the frontage along Bethel. So you'll see more about that when it comes forward. So you'll, you'll see the full detailed proposals for the 2021 comprehensive plan amendments. Hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll give you a little bit of time to study those. And then we will take the June meeting to just walk you through what those amendments are and then probably schedule a public hearing for July. Although in July, of course, being that our meeting is the first Tuesday of the month, we are, we are following right after the holiday weekend. And so we may want to have a discussion about scheduling a special meeting date depending on who's available and, and vacations and other things. So in, at the June meeting, Carrie, did we want to talk about this meeting tonight and have everybody look at their calendars? Or should we do that at the next, in June?
Um, it, we can talk about it tonight, but you know, we're missing a couple of people. We could talk about it tonight, but it might, it might be good for me to also send out a doodle poll or an email asking about dates for July as well.
So, well, let's just ask, does, does anybody know for sure that they're going to be unavailable on July 6th? Or is, is that a meeting that we can proceed, a meeting date we can proceed with?
I will be available.
I'll be here.
If I'm on the road, I can, I can definitely zoom from wherever I'm at. It should be good.
I'm here through mid-June.
We're talking about July.
Um, hang on, let me check my calendar. Sorry.
While you're checking, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. It sounds like we at least have four people, which is the minimum. I just wanted to make sure that if we schedule a hearing, that we won't have any attendance problems that make it so that the public can't provide testimony.
Hey, Nick, Carrie, Annette, just to let you know now, I will be missing the June meeting because I will be out of town.
Okay. Hey, Nick, what you just said though, maybe it's good for us, but maybe it wouldn't be good for people. Maybe other people, like the public won't be here. So maybe me, we might want to think about putting it off a week or so.
Yeah, that's, that's actually not a bad point. It is, it is a difficult time of the year for the public. Although I think August tends to be a, a time of the year when people typically don't show up for hearings either. So it's, I don't know that July 6th is going to be any worse than any other time before September, when people get back into their routine. But if that's the planning commission's desire, I'm happy to, to look at alternate dates.
What would the next Tuesday be? What's, what's that date?
Uh, well, there's city council that night. So Tuesdays are city council, except for, there, there is a, oh, I'm looking at August. I was going to say there's a fifth Tuesday in August, but we could also just delay it until August 3rd if we have.
It's whatever you guys choose. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. I just want to be able to give people opportunity to make testimony if they want to.
All right. And, and I'm going to give Stephanie some trouble because I'm going to be in Hawaii for our next meeting, but I'm still going to come, join you and bring, bring some aloha to the planning commission meeting. If it's the only work I do that.
Thanks, Nick.
So we'll, we'll update you on the schedule in June and for now, we'll, we'll keep the meeting data scheduled.
So is that it? Are we done?
I am going back to the agenda, but I think that's everything, right, Carrie?
That's it. So can I ask one quick question before we go? Um, I suppose I could adjourn to, everybody could go, but food trucks, where are they allowed in the, in town? And how do they, how are they able to operate? I mean, can they just pull up in any parking lot or is there some sort of rules?
It's, it depends whether you're operating from a public right of way or on private property. That's part of the answer. The other part of the answer is that you have to have health department approval, obviously for, for serving food. The city does have something called a street use permit where you can get permission to park on city, in a city parking stall in a public right of way and serve food. Or you, or you could have a hot dog cart on the sidewalk if you wanted to do something like that. There is an approval process for getting a street use permit. If you're doing it on private property, there, I believe that food trucks are zoned. And so they're only allowed in certain zones. So.
They're in our use table. I can tell you exactly what zones they're in if you want to know. Yeah, just real quick. Okay. Food trucks are allowed in residential mixed use, neighborhood mixed use, commercial mixed use, downtown mixed use, gateway mixed use, business professional mixed use, commercial corridor, commercial heavy, industrial flex. We don't have any industrial flex zones right now. And civic and institutional.
Probably would have been easier to tell me whether not allowed.
It's about half of our zones. Most of the residential, they're not allowed in, but they are allowed in residential mixed use and neighborhood mixed use.
Business professional?
Yes.
Okay. So that was one of the other, that question. But I have one more question. Do you think because we're in phase three, are we ever going to meet in person again, like sooner than later? Is there any talk about that? Because I know we're at the school, we're starting to meet in person, which is been wonderful.
I think by the end of summer, we will certainly be meeting in person as long as we don't have a major mutation that is getting around our vaccines. But the mayor has given a tentative timeline of going back to in-person meetings at the end of summer.
Yay.
So. All right. Well, thank you so much.
And, and I did want to mention on your, your food truck question, if you're doing a food truck on private property, the, if the parking lot is already paved and has stormwater, you're fine. If you're pulling into a gravel lot, that's a totally different story because you, you have to have, you, you can't, you can't create a gravel lot or make alterations to the site without getting certain permits. So it's fine if you want to go park in an existing parking stall and have a food truck. It's a totally different story. If you're going to clear a bunch of brush and spread gravel and try to set up a food truck. So there, there is a difference in terms of what you can do on the property, depending on the type of, whether any development is required to support that, that use.
I didn't, and I don't have any plans or know of anybody that's doing one. I just, I know. So we don't have very many around here like other cities have.
You've got to have a, a critical mass of people. I think that, you know, there's, there's been one up, there was one up at the courthouse for a while that, gosh, I forget, I think it was, there was a Thai food truck up there. It was excellent food and they didn't do enough business for it to be worthwhile, even with that many employees. So you really have to have a huge critical mass of people to make it viable. And we've had a few down by the ferry terminal in Port Orchard that only operate in the summer when there's higher traffic. But in the winter, there just aren't enough people to, to make it viable.
Okay.
So, you know, the downtown plan, that's the whole idea is we have to, if we want a vibrant business district and lots of food options, you got to have a lot of people.
Okay. All right. Well, does anybody have anything else?
I, I want to say that Nick, well deserved on your vacation and I hope you have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
All right. Well, everybody have a great night and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.